And then shop the community energy usage with other communities to lower the rate. And if they were able to show a better rate on a kilowatt hour or a, on a term of natural gas, then that rate would be, and it is now allowed by New York State, by the governor's initiative, that rate would be allowed to be passed on to the residents if they chose to sign on. There's nothing mandatory. But I see the two gentlemen from New York are not here, and they told me they were going to be here, so I'm not going to hold a meeting for them. I would ask the board to just, see if we can put this off. The next meeting we'll reschedule. I don't know, maybe they got stuck.
We're doing it to show up before the public hearing number six.
Okay. All right, so we'll see. Before we do that, we have some folks here from Good Energy, and as soon as he's ready, or they are ready, I'll have you come up and address the board and the audience. You can introduce yourselves to the board.
How Edward Carey should be here. So he can give an annual overview while I try to set up your [inaudible].
Great. No, that's okay. Ed, good to see you again. Who are you?
No, that's okay. Well, uh...
Please. Is that, is that...
I believe it's working.
That doesn't appear to be...
The microphone doesn't... Thanks. Someday we'll actually buy ourselves a... They haven't worked.
I...
No, it's just...
I...
No, dead? We're dead. So you're just gonna have to speak louder. Now, if someone came here, then we'll try to answer your questions.
I come from a very large family, so speaking with my family is a real privilege. Um, well, thank you, council supervisor, for having my colleague Javier and I, to present to you to the town and to yourselves. I just want to go over a little bit of the history of myself and company of Good Energy, and why we are here today. A little about myself, I've been doing energy for, literally, since the day I was born. My family worked in an energy company for multiple years, multiple decades. Then I went and worked for the city of New York doing buying for electricity, excuse me, natural gas, fuel, gasoline for the city of New York, both for Giuliani and Bloomberg. And then I moved on to the big real-time energy company, S, worked there for several years. And then I met Javier and then with Good Energy, Javier was one of the founding partners of Good Energy about 15 years ago. So, a little about the company is that we are a national company. We have five offices around the United States. We're in Boston, headquarters in New York, Peoria, Illinois, Dallas, Texas, and California. We have about 110, 120 employees, and we cover all different types of real estate. It is large big-box stores to multi-dwelling housing units to large skyscrapers in various cities of its Boston, New York, Chicago, LA, Dallas, Houston. But then, several years ago, we got involved with government, and we took on over 300 municipalities in the state of New Jersey. So we have Lady City, Trenton, Newark, Edison, Woodbridge. All of those municipalities, we have on contract, both doing electric, natural gas, and actually demand response programs. And in those type of, in the New Jersey program, we probably put more than, I would say, I would guess probably over $60 million back into that state with that type of program. Okay, that's a link for the municipality, so what we're doing is just for the infrastructure for the municipality, if it's going to be the town hall or city hall or jail or wastewater treatment or sanitation plant. And then we do this also to save a little, we have another 300-plus municipalities that we, that we take on their, just their infrastructure. And then we're in Massachusetts and Ohio and everywhere else. But what I'm here to really talk about today is a new program. New York State is the seventh state to have adopted a new program called Community Choice Aggregation, CCA. And how CCA works is basically, when we were in the state of Illinois doing this, well, we got, that's when we sort of really discovered it, is where the residents actually come together. Like, right now, the municipality is like, they're taking all their infrastructure, they're taking their town halls, their wastewater treatment plants, their jails, so they're making, they're forming their own aggregation, they're basically going into Costco-type theory, is they're going to buy in bulk and they're going to get a discount. Well, that's what we did in the state of Illinois, is we took on over 2 million customers and formed this massive aggregation, and then went out to bid, and everyone lowered their price. We got involved in the state of Illinois, about 10% of the state was doing this kind of buying group. As of today, since we've been there, over 90% of the state of Illinois buys their, the residents buy their power in this type of program, and it's been extremely successful. So, with that kind of program, about, over about $120 million went back into the state of Illinois, and that really alerted other governors and states saying, like, that's a pretty interesting program going on in there, how do we get involved with that? So we started to trend, New Jersey has it, Massachusetts has it, California has it. And then the chair of the Public Service Commission, Audrey Zindelton, she said, "Let's sort of take a look at this." She came to our office, we told her on how we do this. New York State, we had a pilot program in Westchester County, of which we were the lead advisor for, to get townships and cities as White Plains, Nurichelle, Pleasantville. They all got involved, they formed this massive aggregation, about, about 130,000 people came together and formed this aggregation, and over $10 million has gone into, into Westchester County. They benefited off this, this type of buying group tremendously. Right above them is Deutz County, they wanted to do it. And they said, like, so they, they said, the governor's office said, like, it's a pilot program, let's see how this sort of works out. They, they really, like, lobbed, lobbed it to get the statewide order. It was successful, but in that time period, the Public Service Commission, they dissolved, and now they have a new public, the commissioner of the Public Service Commission, she resigned, and now we have the new public commissioner, John Rhoads. And he's in the, he's now said, this is one of his main things, is his, is forming CCA's. Now, that's sort of the history. How the program sort of works is, the local one has to pass a local law for us to do a proposal, that's all it is. And what it is, basically, how it works is, basically, everyone's gotten these harassing phone calls from ESCOs saying, "Oh, we can lower your bills," and, you know, that type of stuff. And those type of companies, you know, they're basically C to D level type companies are going after residential customers. We don't really like that, because we know people are on fixed incomes and stuff like that, and then they play all these, these type of games, and at the end of the, within the terms of the contract, a lot of times your rates actually double, sometimes triple. Why that happens basically is, when a door-to-door salesman comes to your door and tries to sell you one of these type of products, you don't read the whole contract, and then there's terms in there. The terms say, you know, if you go for 12 months, 6 months, 24 months, whatever it is, and then all of a sudden you find your rates double, and you get added, you would say, "I want to get out of that," you break the contract. Well, guess what? You violated a contract, and there's a penalty associated. So that company has the right to come after you and say, you know, "You still owe us money for this." The program we're trying to go is, is I don't have a contract. There is no contract. A person can come into this program, and they can exit this program at any time, and there are no penalties. Basically, what is going on right now is, as a municipality, you have, basically, you have two choices. The choices are with utility, with National Grid, where you go to the second one, is you can go to an ESCO and buy your power. Again, you're buying power as, the average home is between 1,000 and 3,000 square feet of buying power. You don't have that much buying power. If you all come together as one, you have tremendous buying power. Your buying power is, if not greater, than Syracuse University, who runs the road. I mean, their load up there, I know for a fact, is about 145 million kilo- each power. You're double that. You have certain companies that would never, ever talk to you, ever, as 1,500 square feet of buying power, coming to you and you have about 3 million square feet of buying power, they're going to kick down the door and roll out red carpet for you. And again, with these type of programs, you're coming together and you're adding a third buying component to your buying power. That's all you're doing. Right now, it's like, you have the default service, which is utility, or you can go to an ESCO, and you bring in a second default rate, and the default rate in the CCA program. And again, any individual can come into the program and exit the program at any time, and you have to honor that price. You know, you're, you're, basically, you're going, again, going back to the Costco-type theory, is, I'm playing, and I'm forming a 2 to 3 million square feet of buying power against someone who's basically 1,500, I'm going to win that bid. And we're also bringing in companies that you would never have access to. You know, when we do form these type of bids, you know, if you go after an individual home, you'll probably get 20 bids that would bid on your unit. With these type of bids, you're only going to have four companies, four, maybe, maybe six. The reason being is, when we go out and we form a hedge, when we go out and buy power, we're buying between, you know, 60 to 80 million dollars with power. And because the laws, because basically it's brilliant, because it's going on, you have to have double the amount of money in the bank to support that hedge. So when we do these hedges, you know, we're going to buy power with, you know, close to 200 to 300 million dollars with power. There's not too many people who have that cash, companies that have that cash. So you're only going to have, like, you know, four or five companies that are going to bid on this, and they're going to be hard. They're going to be, you know, the biggest ones out there, probably someone familiar with it, be Constellation Direct. There's international companies that are, that are now interested. The largest utility in the world is EEF, that's electric defense. They want access to this. They, they're going to come out and be a third-party supplier. Okay, we are in, we've been in the Hockenack County area for a while now. We already have signed up Menoa, Fayetteville, some of the building issues also.
All right, so, I'm going to just review some of the details of how to implement this program. But one of the key points is, in New York, it's become the seventh state in the country to do this. There's not a lot of states that empower municipalities to aggregate community load for residents. So this is a very special administrative rule, you can, or statute, that you get, that a lot of states don't. So it's another option for your residents, as opposed to what they can go out on their own to do individually. So, the big key is economies of scale, that's the rule. The other point is that the billing remains the same. So if you have any questions about who your energy company's going to be, NYSE, NYMO, National Grid, your utility still is your utility. If there's any tree limbs that are really to be cut down, if there's any electrical problems, if there's any brownouts or blackouts, you have the same 800 number that you call it. That's key. So the reduction is on, there's two components. There's the delivery component of your bill, and then there's your energy component. And the energy component's what's going to be reduced. You still pay the utility for delivery services, whether it's customer service, whether, like I said, tree limbs that need to be cut, anything, the local life. So that's, that's the rule. And the good thing about dealing with Good Energy and our program is that our enabling documents, which are a couple, I'll go through them, is we have an implementation plan that had to be petitioned to the Public Service Commission, which was approved. We also had to have a data protection plan petitioned with the Public Service Commission that was approved. And also, an outreach plan, a mandatory outreach plan that was approved. The good news is that communities that fall under our implementation plan are fast-tracked, with deep case approval. So you don't have to petition the Public Service Commission as an individual municipality. So that's the advantage of using our program. Our generic plans and mainline documents have all been approved, which is exciting. So you guys can do it, along with Fayetteville, Menoa, Chennango, whoever wants to participate in our program, along with other people in different towns. So that's exciting. So create, not only creating economies of scales and, you know, qualifying with your municipal residents, community residents, but also mobilizing with other towns. And what's important, especially for, you know, the board to hear, is that shared services is really paramount right now in the state. Obviously, the county wants everybody, the state, the government, wants everybody to utilize the shared services code, so this can qualify, both on the municipal buying side of things, where you aggregate your municipal facilities, but also on the community choice aggregation side. So you satisfy that shared services point. So if you're doing it with your neighboring municipalities, obviously, it would be good to promote that, and I know that there are special grants that you're given, if you provide some form of savings to the county and the state. So that's key. So, what needs to be done to move forward in the process, just to do the analysis of the comparative savings in the market, is you have to pass a local law. You have to hold a public hearing. You have to, obviously, agree to pass a resolution selecting a CCA administrator, that's our designation, so you guys know. We are not a supplier of energy. We're not supplying the energy, we're not supplying the electricity. We are a CCA administrator, that's a designation with the Public Service Commission, that not everybody has. So just be clear that Good Energy is that. We then facilitate the public outreach, we facilitate the process of ERFP, the Request Proposals and Quotes, and we create the competition with the wholesale suppliers, like Edward was saying, you know, these large, large energy components that are going to want that aggregated load in that business. So, we run those RFPs for you, along with the entire program from soup to nuts, as well as reporting your program to the Public Service Commission. So we are mandated to report our findings, as well as how we're progressing during the whole time, term of the program. So we are, we are updating the Public Service Commission with that. So there's a rigorous process that we go through, and so we're going to be doing that work for you. We're going to be taking away a lot of the program work. Obviously, there is going to be some time and effort from your clerks or from your administrative staff, whoever it is, you know, but at the end of the day, we have our own outreach department and team, we have our own call centers, we can take a lot of the questions that you're going to get from your residents, your community. We're going to come and do town hall meetings, if you'd like, along with a public hearings, if that's necessary. And then we're going to, we're going to do a mandated 60-day outreach. And whether it's advertisements in your local publications, whether it's, you know, some type of public informational commercial or whatever, whether it's some printed material, postcards, billboards, if that's allowed, you know, whatever you prefer to do to make sure that the message and the information is disseminated properly to your residents. So that's, that's key. And we have tremendous amount of experience with that. We actually passed well over 200 referenda in the state of Illinois, where you had to actually put a valid question on the primary and general election. We actually were successful in passing all communities with that. So outreach is something that we do. So it's not just, the importance of this program is not just around the money, obviously, that's our expertise, but if you look at our slides and our presentation, it is really the public outreach. Community outreach, that's very important. So make sure that everybody in the town knows.
And when we do the public outreach, we pay for that. None of the money comes out of the town coffers. This is, you know, we put a lot of...
The other thing that we can do with CCA, CCA has become a sounding board for potential renewable energy projects. Depending on what your appetite is with regard to renewable energy and sustainability goals, the governor's plan, reforming the energy vision plan that he put out two years ago, wants CCA to really bring in some exciting new type of technology, right? So whether it's community solar, whether it's small hydro, whether it's distributed energy resources, whether it's community R or some type of CHP project, you know, this is a great way to carve out portions of the load where you can bring potentially those type of projects in. So CCA is catalyst to those things, and the state wants to see that as well. So we partnered great companies to bring in those type of options. So what we do with CCA, not only we bring economic value and savings to everybody in the community, but those who are interested in bringing renewable projects, we can talk about that and see where in the community, where in the geographic area it makes sense to bring in developers or new companies to go. And I know you guys have already looked at a lot of that stuff, you know, in the...
Number six.
Yes, you explained that. So depending where your outreach bills are, what your power leads are with that, those options, we can certainly embed them in the community choice aggregation program. As far as, you know, what we do on the outreach, we also have with, you know, creating a municipal website for the program, so we actually build it. We've done it in all our programs, it becomes standard. So there's a centralized repository for information, FAQs, documentation, savings amount, rate amounts, everything, all linked from your municipal website, so people know exactly, not just from printed material, but that you have a link that actually drives them to that information, in the event that they have any questions during the course of the term of the program. So that's very important to do. And, you know, at the end of the day, you know, what, what makes this successful is the economies of scale and bringing in the right companies to really bid. Unfortunately, when you go as an individual to get better rates for yourself at your home, you're not getting the best suppliers out there. There's very, there's C and D rated suppliers. But by aggregating the entire load of the community, now you're bringing in large companies, like Edward was saying, you know, that normally would not look at an individual, or their business model doesn't focus on residential customers, right? They're focusing on low-handed true, nitpicking the large industrial, you know, the Syracuse universities, the big manufacturing plants, but this is, what it does, it evens the playing field. One last takeaway that I'd like, I'd like to demonstrate statistically how this makes sense, if you look at all the competitive markets around the state, what I mean by the states that have deregulation and choice, right, where you can find supply. Statistically, about 80 to 90% of commercial and industrial customers have utilized this to save money for their plants and for their factories, right? It's the polar opposite in the residential market, this is why this program is so powerful. Only 20% of residential folks have actually switched and taken advantage of savings, right? So statistically shows us that there, there is a disconnect with what energy suppliers, competitive energy suppliers are focusing. They're focusing on large industrial. So this changes that, right? And in the state of Illinois, now, almost 90% of all municipalities are offering this program to their residents, a very successful state. So keep that in mind, that's just a final takeaway as far as what this program does. It really evens the playing field for residential customers and provides you with savings, which is what commercial and industrial customers have been doing for years in the state of New York.
Yeah, I mean, encourage, like, I have my stack of business or, it has a web address on there, which is www.ny-meep.com, and on there describes the program, and also there's a whole bunch of FAQs if anyone has any type of questions related to, and also if you have any questions, please, you know, give me a call.
And do you, does anybody have any questions?
I'm gonna, yeah, just, I want to hold you guys for a minute, just in case the board has any questions. Any questions from the board at this point?
No.
Okay.
I have a couple. I know the National Grid, for example, buys several hundred million square foot, if you want to put it that way, of purchasing power. They don't upgrade or raise the price, whatever the power that they buy is the price that we pay.
They don't, they don't buy on that, they only get money on delivery.
But with Good Energy or through the CCA, would they be competing with companies like NYMO to buy power for their customers?
No, you have your delivery company that competes with, with nobody.
Right.
Right? Because it's just, if I move into the town, I basically have a default rate, which would be the spot market tariff rate, and my delivery company, which would be National Grid, and I have no choice, right? So I have to take, so they're not competing with you. I'm saving you on the commodity of the supply, not on the delivery cost, completely different, so you don't have to worry about the competition between you two. In fact, the billing is the same. So you're, we're using National Grid's infrastructure to bill residents. So they're friendly, they're, they're okay with this. The utilities are fine with...
Well, they're still going to get their delivery charge, because their cars are slow.
People, they say, like, what is a utility? I tried to put it in some lame terms, it's a, you know, you go out of town, go work for their, accidentally you forget your jacket, you call up the restaurant, "Hey, I forgot, can you, can you bring it back?" They put that jacket in a brown box, and like, it gets delivered to your home, but that brown box is owned by UPS, that's a utility. What's inside that box, you own that, that's your jacket. That's exactly how utilities, it's their wires, it's their pipe, but inside that pipe, inside that wire, that's your electricity, it's yours, and you can go out and buy it. What's inside that electricity is, you know, the spot, a day ahead, or index, or whatever you want to call it, that's a total 100% passer to the, to the customer. So, yeah, the utility, they make all their money, 100% of their profit is on the transportation and the distribution of the power. They do not make money on the supply.
Right. So, the way I see this then is, we have two different programs. We have a program for municipalities, and then what you have asked us to do is pass a local law to comply with the PSC to allow you to aggregate residential usage, and then generate, based on that, shop it, and then generate a rate, right?
A proposal.
Pretty much, yeah, pretty simple. You guys would handle all of the information and outreach to the public, that's required, right? So there's no cost to the town of Cicero at all, right? Everything's at your expense. So, let me just say this to you. I've taken a look at your municipal rate and discount, and what I've asked is, is I've asked our controller, who's not here tonight, to double-check those numbers and crunch them, but what you're offering to town of Cicero is an annual savings on our electric and gas, just the municipality, streetlights, these buildings, not talking to residents, $10,612.72 a year, or roughly $884.40 a month. Basically, what I'm looking at, right? If your, if your numbers are correct, you double-check them. And we've had to do absolutely nothing to get that savings, right? Just, I'm, I'm very interested in that. So, I guess, if there are no more questions for the board, then I will go ahead and open up the public hearing, and would anyone like to speak either in favor or against? Yes, sir, please come on up.
Can I, as a sample, you have a local law?
Oh, I have.
Oh, you have?
Yeah, I have. Our attorney has already read.
Okay. Come in here? Yeah, please, okay. My name's Lawrence Pedersen. Notice in the Post Standard on March 22nd that Cicero is getting into the energy business, and need a law to authorize it got my attention. With all the town is doing, why would they add this to the plan? Of course, to save residents and businesses money in the supply of electricity and gas. Good Energy LP would act as the administrator, and all of us would be pulled into the program with their recommended ESCO unless we pop it back. But we already have ESCOs? Yes, 71 selling electricity, 70 selling gas and natural, the residential market. With all these choices, why do we need an administrator and a new program? Because the PSC is at war with 170 ESCOs, where overcharges estimated at $30 to $40 million per month. That buys a lot of good legal assistance, which is probably why we are here tonight. PSC has created this business plan to essentially leverage the communities to pick out the ESCOs, which they do not have, which they have not been able to do. Please keep in mind the following: this is a new program we do for, there is no evidence that money will be saved. The current utilities control 75% of the electric sales in New York, they are the aggregators. National Grid makes money on the distribution of electric and gas.
Good Energy LP would act as the administrator and all of us would be pulled into the program with their recommended ESCO unless we pop it back. But we already have ESCOs? Yes, seventy-one selling electricity, seventy selling gas and natural grid residential market. With all these choices, why do we need an administrator and a new program? Because the PSC is at war with one hundred seventy ESCOs, where overcharges estimated at thirty to forty million dollars per month. That buys a lot of good legal assistance, which is probably why we are here tonight. The PSC has created this business plan to essentially leverage the communities to pick out the ESCOs, which they do not have, which they have not been able to do. Please keep in mind the following. This is a new program we do for. There is no evidence that money will be saved. The current utilities control seventy-five percent of the electric sales in New York. They are the aggregators. National Grid makes money on the distribution of electric and gas, not the supply, which is probably why the ESCOs have behaved badly, according to the PSC. The new plan may save money because low-income customers will not be invited or folded in. They will stay where they are. I recommend that you postpone action on this until you can prove it will advantage us in Cicero. Those of you who have joined, I'm sure that they will attest to their success when inquiries are made. Also, my last question is, if National Grid offers the best rates, will Good Energy LP recommend?
Well, I'd like to comment, and I'll let you guys comment. First of all, we're not making any decisions, sir, and thank you for your input. All we're doing is we're allowing this company to shop it based on the law. But by allowing them to shop it, we are not committing ourselves, or you, to anything. So once the numbers come back, and that's why I made the comment, that I'm looking at numbers here, right? And I don't know if those numbers are true or if they're gonna pan out. So I've asked your controller, our controller, to review this, review the proposal, review the numbers, crunch them, and then make a recommendation. If it looks like this is gonna happen, right, if these numbers are true, yes, there's a lot on our plate and thank you. Yeah, we're very busy, very aggressive, you have a very aggressive town administration, but we're doing a lot of good stuff. But why would I, why would we not entertain savings of eight hundred eighty-four dollars a month, this year alone?
That's the municipality. That's just for you, not the residents. As he said, that's a different market where the utilities have such a large market share, which you don't know how they can compete against. Municipalities, yes, cargo prisons, yes, university buildings, yes.
But we'll look at the rest. If it makes sense, if it makes, if there's a business case and it makes sense, we'll bring it to the board.
One thing I would address so everybody's clear, that this program does not take away the power of choice in New York. Your choice will always be there, it's always protected. And you can always leave your utility, you can always leave this program, and you can always choose whatever ESCO you desire. So this doesn't limit you in any way. It just gives you optionality. It gives you another product in the market, so it gives you more choice. So you're already on a default rate, you can go on a secondary default rate, and you can go and find any one of those seventy-one ESCOs and choose it whenever you want, without a contract.
Again, we do not have.
Just so we're clear.
We don't have a contract, so there's nothing for us to enforce. Like, we can't say, like, a state of Oregon, I don't say that.
We're not pushing out any ESCOs in the market at all.
You know, I definitely agree with you. There is a lot of shaky business going on in the state of New York. There's two hundred and twenty-five registered ESCOs in the state. You know, we're in this business. I personally trust that fifty, maybe sixty of them. And these type of programs, what I was mentioning before, it's, they're large purchases. You're only gonna have about, you know, five companies which are trying to bid on this. These companies are in excess of over fifty billion to a hundred billion dollars each. I mean, those are their market caps. They're large, but I definitely agree with you. The residential market is, you have people, they form these ESCOs and they're operating out of their basement. And they're signing up, you know, people who are not knowledgeable about energy. And that's probably the majority of the market. It's a sad fact that it's way down in New York.
Would anyone else like to approach the DS to either speak in favor or against shopping allowing these folks to shop with our energy?
As Mr. Cushman said, NYMO or National Grid says they do not make anything on the gas and the electric. They buy gas and electric for whole New England, New York State. Why can't they buy it? You could buy it less than they do.
Well, they are on, as you said, Mr. Cushman said, they buy a spot market. It's just a market approach. So they're basically tagged to a tariff rate. And what we're doing is we're looking at what that historical rate is and we're trying to beat that rate. That's what we're doing. And we're doing it by shopping intelligently, going after large providers that can aggregate their money and give a better rate. And that's how we do it. We go out into the wholesale market and get and find a better price than just, you know, going out there and getting whatever the spot market is. There's no control of that. That fluctuates every month and so you don't have any strategic buying. So that's what we're doing, strategic purchasing of energy as opposed to just taking the spot price. That's all you're doing. It could go up thirty percent tomorrow and it could go up sixty percent the next month and then it could come back down. So you're loaded. There's no budget security, there's no budget security. But this program, what it does, it provides some type of budget for every month.
National Grid is, they're going into the wholesale market, which is sort of, New England has the NEISO, which is New England Independent System, that's the wholesale group. New York has its own grid system, which is NYISO, New York Independent System. And wholesalers are selling nuclear power, coal power, natural gas, wind, hydro, biogas, they're putting it into the wholesale market. Companies like, that are a utility that's putting it as a passer to you, they're also buying. You have companies, National Grid is a massive, they all know that they're a massive company, but you have companies that are literally double the size of National Grid that are gonna be competing against them. Literally double the size.
If I got a gas bill, I'm gonna try and sell gas to National Grid.
No, 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 no. Gas is gonna go, it's gonna go into the wholesale market and then it turns into, what you can deliver to your home is a retail product. And it, you know, gas comes up, you know, basically coming from Gulf of Mexico, Marcella Shale, Bakken. And then those are the three big gas depots, and it gets pumped into here, and some of it's gonna obviously come through Canada, but you gotta go in through a wholesaler and it gets turned into a retail product.
Okay, let me ask you this question. All right, I use, say I use a hundred kilowatts a month on my electric. You look at the bill, the first fourteen or eighteen kilowatts, I'm charged like a dollar kilowatt hour. The next ones is four cents. Is that the way your bills are gonna be?
No, our bill will be one price per kilowatt hour. It won't be a tiered rate the way it's broken up in the tariff. So you'll have one fixed rate that'll be better than all those tiered rates. That's.
Hey, what we're trying to hear is like, we're asking the town to pass the local law just so we can, the way that the Public Service Commission, the way the law is written, is we're not allowed to touch anything unless we have permission for obvious reasons. So we have to have the local law in place for us to bring back a proposal. That's all it is. We're not gonna come back to the town and say, oh, you know, we have savings and it's only two percent. That's suicide. We're not here to do that. We wanna come back with a proposal in somewhere in the range of eight percent, maybe ten percent. I don't know what the percentage might be. In the state of Illinois, we hit thirty-five percent. We're not gonna hit that here. We just, we did Sustainable Westchester, we had twelve percent. And all the mayors down there and supervisors there felt very comfortable with that and generated a lot of money and savings back into the community. So again, we're not signing a contract and then the supervisor was holding for the municipality. We can do a deal like that in four days, five days. This program, we're talking to the CCA program, takes four months. It moves very slowly.
Okay, thank you. Any other further questions or anyone else like to speak before I close the public hearing? I will now close the public hearing and I'm gonna move for the following resolution. I move that we determine that the proposed action can be an unlisted action to the purpose of secret compliance and note the action requires action by no outside permitting agency outside the town. The proposed installation of, I think we have the wrong seeker here. The proposed resolution will not have a negative impact upon the environment and therefore does not require the preparation of a draft environmental impact statement. Looking for a second on the seeker.
Second.
Any further board discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Any abstentions? I move for the adoption of a resolution to approve local law number three of 2018 establishing a community choice aggregation program, CCA, for residential and commercial residents in the town pursuant to section ten, one, double I, A, twelve, Municipal Home Rule and the State of New York Public Service, and the State of New York Public Service Commission, PSC, case number fourteen M zero two two four. The intent of the local law is to allow the town of Cicero to provide demographic and use data to the program administrator, solicit bids for pricing and act as aggregator, aggregator or broker for the sale of electric and natural gas services to residents. Upon filing of the local law, the town of Cicero may act to procure energy supplies through the CCA program but will not in any way own or operate existing supply lines owned by the public utility. All electric and natural gas consumers within the town shall be eligible to participate in the CCA program and all users shall have the ability to opt out of the program. Looking for a second.
Second.
Any further board discussion?
For the state services to residents, it doesn't include the commercial or the municipal part of it as well, it just says.
There are eligible rate classes and mostly small commercial that are eligible, not just residential, but on a statewide order, does it say residents only?
It says, it just says residents.
It says.
For residents.
I don't think that, let me see.
Service, gas, natural gas and services to residents.
Up to residents. And to, that would be also to commercial customers.
Eligible, small commercial customers.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna correct the record, right?
Correct.
I'll correct the record. Let's see, and thank you, Mrs. Voike, for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Bringing that up. So, the intent of the local law is to allow pricing as an aggregator or broker for the sale of electric and natural gas services to residents and small commercial.
Eligible.
Commercial accounts. On filing of the local law, the town of Cicero may act to procure energy supplies from the CCA program but will not in any way own or operate existing supply lines owned by the public utility. All electric and natural gas consumers within the town shall be eligible to participate in the CCA program and all users shall have the ability to opt out of the program. Are we good with that?
Yes.
Yes, you may have a second.
Second, as noted.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Any abstentions? We carry unanimously, thank you. And thank you.
Yes, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for your patience. With the, not with the.
Well, I'm sorry, nothing else I could do for you.
Thank you for your patience, I apologize. And if anybody wants to PowerPoint, anybody in the public, we'll leave some cards.
Yeah, please do, because I'm sure they will.
Yeah.
If anybody wants it.
We'll have some cards.
I think you sent me a PDF of it as well, right?
Yeah, you have all of them.
So, yeah, so I mean, if anybody wants it, reach out to me or they'll send it to you.
We'll leave some marketing cards so people can go to the website.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you for making the trip here.
Oh, my pleasure.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and move right along.
...........................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
This was for the sanitary sewer extension bid award.
Uh, I think, I think that, I think we're, I think we made an error. Um, because we're talking about two separate things.
Yes, there was no...
Let me see, we have here. Hang on, we'll, we'll get it figured out. Uh, sanitary, that's a sanitary sewer extension bid.
Right. The other was a public sewer.
This is a public sewer connection.
Yeah.
So we, we have two separate, Neil, we didn't, we didn't get, we, she made a resolution to allow the public sewer connection.
Yeah. Yeah, and then this is item eleven, and there's another resolution.
Okay, sanitary sewer extension bid award is, is different.
This is where they...
Yep.
This is just item eleven.
Yeah.
Okay.
This has nothing to do with our town.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so anyway...
So I just, yeah.
We're, yeah, I'm staying with that, so we're good. So we read the last, the landco, right? So we're good.
We sound, we sound...
Yeah, we got a second?
Yeah, all right. Yep, I seconded it.
All right, good. Any further board discussion? Sorry for the confusion. Any further board discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Any abstentions? We pass unanimously, thank you.
Move the adoption resolution to create the position of personnel aid. This position, if approved by the Onondahie County Civil Service, will assist the comptroller's office with all personnel and payroll matters.
Second.
Uh, any board discussion? Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Any abstentions? We pass unanimously, thank you.
Move the adoption resolution to approve the appointment of Eric Lent as chairman of the Board of Assessment Review effective immediately, term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen, and a salary of one hundred and forty-seven dollars and ninety cents per session.
Second.
Uh, any board discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Any abstentions? Pass unanimously.
Comptroller, move the adoption of a resolution to proceed into the purchase agreement with sun first equipment finance for the following three pieces of highway equipment and authorize supervisor to sign the agreement. This is budget code D B five one three oh two. Sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifty cents for a Bobcat E fifty-five T four compact excavator. Eighty thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars for John Deere for a three-ten S L backhoe loader. Seventy-six thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars for international forty-three hundred S B A four by two. And seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-one dollars for fusion bruck body, which is part of the above bid. Uh, seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-one dollars will be the down payment. And the coming years, but in the next payment in the coming year will be sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Mr. Stengel, the, the price of the backhoe will be decreased by sixteen thousand, they're gonna give sixteen for a trade-in.
Well, they are. Well, they took it, so we didn't send a document.
Right, so they took it, they give sixteen thousand for that, but they don't present a permit, so what do we do, Frank?